This meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board, please. And just so everybody knows, Mrs. Felton had an obligation for another committee that she is on, a community committee that she had to be at this evening, because obviously our meetings are normally not on Wednesdays, so she had another committee meeting. Mrs. Manning had to leave early for a family problem, and Mrs. Weems is out of town on family business as well. At this time, I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have no public awards or recognitions this evening, so the next thing on our agenda, Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. You know, every month, I'm honored to be able to present the five things for our community to know about Virginia Beach City Public Schools. However, tonight, I'm going to streamline my report a bit, because after yesterday, there's just one thing everybody needs to know, and that is, we are back in school. We did have an outstanding first day of school yesterday. It was incredible here in Virginia Beach, as over 67,000 students came back through our doors and breathed some life back into our buildings. And I have to say, we were ready for each and every one of them. Every single school that I visited, I saw students who were engaged in learning right away, teachers who were, of course, showcasing their passion for education, and our operations were running smoothly and efficiently. So let's take a look at what I'm talking about. So I know that you all laughed a little bit when you saw Class of 2030. I mentioned at Tocquey, this is really the very last year, with a few small exceptions, that we will have any students in our building who were born in the 20th century, which is something interesting to think about. Speaking of Tocquey, I will say this: One of the reasons that we were able to have such a great first day of school is that our teachers were prepared, and especially our newest hires, because we had over 570 new teachers, or teachers new to the division, spend three days with us this year at our Teacher Orientation and Continuous Learning Institute. During that time, our teachers are introduced to our division's vision and mission and core values, and all of the resources that they have to ensure that they're successful as possible. So I do want to give a shout-out and kudos to our Office of Professional Growth and Innovation, which puts on this amazing conference for our new teachers every year. Now, I know I did show you one video already, and that was really an overview of the entire division's first day, but I do have one more to show you to give a sense of what day one looks like at the school level. Our subscribers to a slice of VBCPs saw this video earlier this afternoon, but here's a look at the first day of school at Creed's Elementary.
You know, there really is no excitement quite like first day of school excitement. I can't really imagine any other profession that has this much anticipation, this much excitement. The kids are coming back to us, they're coming back after a fun summer, but at the same time, they're excited to be back, they feel welcome, they feel like they've come home, and we couldn't be any happier to see them.
And I have never seen a line of balloons in front of a school before. I could not have been more excited to bring him to Creed's this morning, and he skipped onto the bus, which was pretty, really amazing. So, yeah, we're looking forward to a really good year.
When you go back to school, you learn more and more and more, and you get to see new friends and new people that you can be with.
I'm excited because I get to see all my friends, and Gavin is now officially Creed's Indian.
We get to see family and friends back together, and we get to see Ms. Conga, all our teachers that have been.
I'm looking forward to have fun with everybody and learn something new this year.
I'm just excited for them. They, we had a great summer, but it'll be nice to, you know, have them be back with their friends and hear their stories about what they're learning and have a little bit, you know, less chaos going on.
Oh, there's nothing like the first day of school. Kids are filled with excitement, teachers are excited, there's some mixed emotions, but overall, it's that butterfly in your stomach feeling on the first day.
This year, we have some really exciting initiatives starting. We're going one-to-one, so that digital expansion is occurring here at Creed's. We're very excited about that. We have implemented full-day kindergarten, and this year, our students are going to be working really hard on student agency and taking ownership of their learning. And our goal this year is agents of our own learning, which means students will know where they're going and what they want to do, set those goals, reflect, and continue to improve on those goals.
The best part is being with my sister, and she's being with me, so I get to help more people out, especially my sister.
You know? And I wish I could tell you that they have the most adorable children at Creed's, but they're like that all over the city, they really are. And it was just a wonderful day and a great way to kick off the school year, and I truly, board members, look forward to sharing all of the amazing things that are lying ahead for us this school year. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. That was very enlightening. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on August 15th. Motion is made by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Ms. Holtz. The voting board is open. The minutes of the August 15th meeting have been approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this meeting. Motion is made by Ms. Rye, seconded by Mr. Edwards. The voting board is open. The agenda has been adopted. The consent agenda has two resolutions: The first for Suicide Prevention Week and the second for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Mr. Edwards, would you please read the first resolution for Suicide Prevention Week?
Yes, I will, thank you. Resolution for Suicide Prevention Week, September 10 through 16, 2017. Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of deaths in the United States and the second leading cause of death among individuals ages 15 to 24, and whereas suicide is now the second leading cause of death in the state of Virginia amongst individuals aged 15 to 24, whereas suicide strikes without regard to locality, socioeconomic status, ethnicity, religious preference, or age, and whereas in the United States, one person completes suicide every 12.8 minutes, and there are 10 to 20 suicide attempts per each suicide completion, and whereas education and community involvement are known to be the most crucial factors in preventing suicide, and whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is focused on ways to educate students, parents, and school staff about suicide and prevention of suicide, and whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, through sustained and dedicated efforts, has implemented programs for all employees and students that recognize a deep commitment at all levels to raise awareness of suicide and its prevention, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach designates the week of September 10 through the 16th, 2017, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Week in the City and Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and be it further resolved that the strategies and activities to address suicide prevention and suicide behaviors be an ongoing, be ongoing in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the Board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this sixth day of September 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. McDonald, would you please read the resolution for the National Hispanic Heritage Month?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, I am honored to present the resolution for National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2017. Whereas one of our nation's greatest strengths is its diversity, which enables Americans to see the world from many viewpoints, and whereas Hispanic and Latino-Americans have forged a proud legacy that reflects the spirit of our nation and community, and whereas it is imperative for the good of our nation that schools continue to build awareness and understanding of these contributions made by people from all cultures and backgrounds, and whereas through the study of these contributions, students may find role models whose participation, commitment, and achievement embody the American spirit and ideals, and whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the importance of multicultural diversity education within our school division, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and participate in the various school activities available during National Hispanic Heritage Month, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this Board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this sixth day of September 2017.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Also, as a part of our consent agenda this evening, we also have some religious exemptions as were sent to us in our agenda packets: The program evaluation schedule for school year 2017-2018, as was presented at our last meeting, new appointments for the Special Education Advisory Committee, as were introduced at our last meeting in August, and the Policy Review Committee recommendations that were explained to us at our last meeting. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Ms. Riggs has made the motion, Ms. Melnick has seconded. The voting board is open. The consent agenda has been adopted. We only have one item on the action part of the agenda this evening: The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments. Mrs. Melnick has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Rye. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The administrative appointments and personnel report has been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce any new administrators?
I would, thank you very much. If I could first ask Caitlin Overmiller to please stand up. So I'm very pleased that she is currently serving as Assistant to the General Counsel in the Coatesville Area School District in PA, and I'm very pleased that this evening you have accepted our recommendation for her to serve as Employee Relations Specialist in the Department of Human Resources. Congratulations. And did you bring a guest with you?
Yes, my mother, Diana Overmiller.
Thank you so much for being here. And if I could ask Shayna Remian to please stand up. Shayna, as you all know probably, has served as a literacy coach, an English teacher, and most recently as administrative assistant at Princess Anne High School, and I am also pleased that this evening you have accepted our recommendation for her to serve as Assistant Principal at Princess Anne High School. Congratulations, Shayna. And did you bring a guest?
Yes, my husband, Evan.
Thank you so much for being here. And finally, if I could ask Allison Bach to please stand up. And so Allison has served as a mental health specialist at Mary Washington Hospital, a course instructor at George Mason University, and most recently as postdoctoral fellow at the University of Minnesota. She was approved at a previous meeting but didn't have the opportunity to come and be introduced to the Board. I'm pleased that you approved her to serve in the position of Program Evaluation Specialist in the Department of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability. Congratulations to you as well. And did you bring a guest? You did not, that's okay. That's all right. Thank you for being here, and Madam Chairwoman, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Next on our agenda is information, and the first item under the information part of our agenda is the School Counseling Program Evaluation. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairman Edwards, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Heidi Janeky, Director of Research and Evaluation. Tonight, I'll provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the comprehensive evaluation of the School Counseling Program's academic component. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. The design and delivery of the VBCPS School Counseling Program is based on the American School Counselors Association, or ASCA, national model, and is focused on student competencies in three domains: Academic, Career, and Social-Emotional Development. This evaluation focuses on the academic domain. Evaluations of the other two domains will be conducted during upcoming school years. This School Counseling Program serves all students in kindergarten through grade 12 and is based on a comprehensive and developmental approach that consists of counseling services, classroom guidance services, consultation services, and coordination efforts. The comprehensive evaluation examined operational components such as school counselors' responsibilities and activities related to academics, staff allocations, professional learning, and parent involvement. We also examined data regarding students who worked with their counselor, progress made toward program goals and objectives related to students' academic preparation, and stakeholders' perceptions. Data were collected through surveys and from the data warehouse. Survey response rates are shown on the slide for each stakeholder group. The evaluation examined school counselors' overall responsibilities in the seven general areas listed on the chart. School counselors were asked to rank the various responsibilities based on how much time they spent working in each area. Rankings by school level showed that, on average, elementary school counselors reported spending the most time on students' mental health issues. Middle and high school counselors reported spending the most amount of time on academic planning. As would be expected, high school counselors reported spending more time on college-related tasks such as college applications, scholarships, and financial aid. Based on the VBCPS Essential Counseling Services by Level document, which outlines specific responsibilities, school counselors were asked to rate the extent to which they were actively involved in various activities related to academics. Areas where more than 90% of school counselors reported being involved to a large extent are listed on the slide. For example, more than 90% of elementary and middle school counselors reported that school counselors at their site were involved to a large extent in assisting with the development of 504 plans. As another example, more than 90% of middle and high school counselors reported involvement to a large extent with advising students on academic issues and course selection, as well as conducting conferences on academic concerns. Results also showed that school counselors at the secondary level were less likely to report involvement in class presentations or small group instruction related to academics compared to elementary school counselors. Staffing was another area assessed as part of the program's operational components. The chart on this slide shows the recommended number of students per full-time counselor based on ASCA in blue, and the Virginia Standards of Quality in green. The red bars depict the number of students for each school counselor FTE allocation at each school level in 2016-2017. VBCPS staffed school counseling departments at or above the SOQ guidelines but below the ASCA recommendation. The school division staffed middle school counseling departments at a rate of one school counselor for every 304 students, which was a higher staffing ratio than the SOQ guideline of 1 to 400. The VBCPS staffing ratio was also higher at the high school level, with one school counselor for every 341 students compared to the guideline of 1 to 350. Consistent with the quantitative data showing that the counselor-staffing ratio was highest at the middle school level, middle school counselors, teachers, and administrators, shown in orange, were most likely to agree that the allocations provided to the school allowed the program to meet students' needs. High school counselors, teachers, and administrators, shown in green, were the least likely to agree that the allocations allowed the program to meet students' needs. High school counselors, teachers, and administrators were also the least likely to agree that the caseloads of counselors allowed them adequate time to counsel students, although agreement levels were low at each level. Professional learning is another important component of the ASCA model. During 2016-2017, four mandatory sessions for all school counselors were offered, along with nearly two dozen additional optional sessions. High percentages of school counselors across the division reported that they received adequate professional learning opportunities, that the professional learning allowed them to meet their students' needs, and that it allowed them to do their job effectively. Part of the school counselor's role is to collaborate with and engage parents. When asked about their involvement with the program, parents of high school students were most likely to indicate that they knew who their child's school counselor was and that they had talked to their child's school counselor during the school year. Both parents and school counselors indicated that academic planning and individual conferences were the predominant modes of parental participation. From 53 to 61% of parents agreed that school counselors engaged parents with the goal of helping parents support their child's development. While the School Counseling Program serves all students across the division, students were asked on the survey about working directly with their school counselor. First, high percentages of students at each school level reported that they knew who their school counselor was. In addition, from 67 to 87% of students reported meeting with their school counselor at least once during the school year, with the highest percentage reported at the high school level. The evaluation also assessed the extent to which the School Counseling Program was meeting its objectives related to the program's role in supporting students academically. Ten specific objectives were aligned with ASCA and Virginia Department of Education standards and were assessed primarily with student perception data. A selection of the relevant survey items are included on the next few slides. The first four objectives focused on school counselors helping students to set high expectations and take challenging courses, understand graduation requirements, understand the importance of SOL tests, and understand the connection between attendance and academic success. Across all school levels, at least 72% of students agreed with survey items related to these four objectives. The next several objectives focused on school counselors helping students in various areas of need. High percentages of students who reported working with their school counselor agreed that it helped them learn skills for success, 84 to 88% agreement, and helped with their self-confidence, 84 to 91% agreement. Somewhat lower percentages of students reported that working with their school counselor helped them with communication skills and helped them work independently and solve problems. Objective nine was that students would have an opportunity to explore or identify academic, career, and social-emotional goals through the academic and career planning process. As shown in the chart, fifth-grade students were most likely to agree that they had the opportunity to explore goals in each area, while lower percentages of middle and high school students agreed with statements about identifying goals in each area. The final objective was that students would be aware of academic and career pathways and work with their school counselor to select coursework that is aligned with their pathway. As shown in the chart, middle and high school students were less likely to agree that their school counselor helped them become aware of different career options, understand the courses aligned to those career interests, understand the transition process from middle to high school or from high school to post-secondary options, and identify programs available in high school. High school students' agreement rates for these survey items were especially low at 51 to 68%. General perceptions of the School Counseling Program were also assessed. This table shows that overall, high percentages of students agreed that their school counselor was available to them, helped them, and believed that all students can succeed. Lower percentages of secondary students agreed that their school counselor knew them and their goals and challenges. While not shown on the slide, staff members' overall perceptions about the school counselors were also very positive. At least 95% of school counselors, 85% of teachers, and 94% of administrators across the division agreed with similar survey items about the school counselors' accessibility, actions, and beliefs. When asked to indicate their level of satisfaction with their School Counseling Program, 92% of fifth graders, 84% of middle school students, and 71% of high school students indicated that they were satisfied. Parent satisfaction levels were the lowest of all groups surveyed. Staff satisfaction levels were relatively high for all groups surveyed, with the exception of high school teachers. The pattern of results for all staff groups mirrored the pattern of results for students and parents, which showed that percentages, perceptions of the School Counseling Program were notably less positive at the high school level. As a result of the evaluation, four recommendations were made. The first is to continue the program with modifications noted in the recommendations. The second recommendation is to develop a plan for additional school counselor allocations at the high school level for 2018-2019 to ensure that high school students' needs can be met in the academic, as well as the college and career and personal and social development domains. The third recommendation is to ensure that secondary students identify goals through the academic and career planning process and that they are aware of academic and career pathways to meet those goals. The fourth recommendation is to publicize the School Counseling Program to parents so that parents are aware of the various services and opportunities for assistance that are offered. At this time, Mr. Robert Jamison will share the administration's recommendations and response.
Good evening, Dr. Spence and members of the School Board. Upon review of the School Counseling Program evaluation, the administration concurs with the recommendations. We also want to thank Dr. Robertson and Dr. Janeky and the staff in Planning, Innovation, and Accountability for preparing a report with program recommendations that will guide the refinement of school counseling services for students. The evaluation design and results highlight the transformation of the profession from guidance counseling to school counseling. In 2008, Virginia Beach City Public Schools formally changed the title of the position to professional school counselor, which is reflected in School Board policies and regulations. The evolution from guidance counselor to school counselor reflects how the role has evolved to embracing a comprehensive approach that optimizes student outcomes and much more than just college planning. Focus areas now include emotional support, family intervention, social development, academic guidance, and career planning. School counselors are now a strong collaborative member of an educational team. Given the crucial and expanded role of school counselors, the Office of Student Support Services and the Department of School Leadership will address high school counselor staffing allocations in the 2018-19 school year when discussing next year's budget. In regards to recommendation number three, during the 2016-17 school year, secondary school counseling programs developed academic and career planning activities that students will engage in throughout the 2017-18 school year. Elementary school counselors receive professional development on instructional resources and strategies to support academic and career planning activities with students. Furthermore, these activities across all levels, excuse me, involve ongoing content Furthermore, these activities across all levels, excuse me, involve ongoing contact between counselors and students for goal-setting purposes and increased awareness of post-secondary options. As you recall, the School Board workshop was conducted in February 2017, highlighting some of the new academic and career planning resources available to students and schools. And on February 28th, the Office of Student Support Services and the Office of Technical and Career Education hosted a parent connection workshop on academic and career planning resources for families. The aforementioned school counselor activities and lessons planned for this school year will formally introduce students in Virginia Beach City Public Schools to the Academic and Career Planning website along with other online tools. The site features a video series explaining the academic and career planning process with an emphasis on personalized pathways, career pathway documents with links related to VBCPs, advanced academic and academy programs, and links to state and regional resources for students and families to explore. For recommendation number four, Virginia Beach City Public School, excuse me, school counselors will publicize program events and activities to students, families, and community stakeholders through newsletters, school messaging systems, grade-level-specific correspondence, online communication tools, and a stronger social media presence. Additionally, the Office of Student Support Services will again be conducting two parent connection workshops this year. One will address navigating the school, excuse me, the college application process, and the other will focus on academic planning and the course selection process. In closing, we are excited to announce VBCPs will be one of five school divisions in the state participating in a cohort to earn the Recognized American School Counsel Association Model Program Ramp Distinction, and we look forward to bringing this honor to our premier school division. Thank you for your time, and we are prepared to answer any questions.
Mr. Edwards?
The, relative to SOQ, we are, we staff much more generously at the middle school than the high school. We are, we are doing better than SOQ at middle school or at the high school, but much, much better at the middle school. Assuming SOQ is, has some validity, would there be any merit to considering any shift of staffing allocations between middle and high? And again, in terms, you know, the, the feedback indicated the need and the pain and things at the high school level were much greater.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to steal from, you know, one to the other, but on the other hand, in terms of total resources, maybe, you know, we're recommending adding, but should we also concurrently maybe do some shifting?
I believe it's on Slide seven, with 67% of our students reporting that they spend time with their counselor at the middle school level, that shift may only increase that issue, being that that was the lowest of our three levels, so ideally it would be an additional allocation for the high school.
Ms. McLeod?
Thank you very much. This was very, very helpful. I, like Mr. Edwards, have concerns, especially at the high school level, so you, I've got your back because I want more counselors in the high school, quite frankly. So, yeah, there you go, guys. So, but especially when you look at what, 90% of the counselor's time is helping getting ready for college stuff, and having just graduated two Virginia Beach School students here myself, my big concern is for those kids in the middle. And that, that college isn't possible for them, and are we really, you know, if we're spending so much time getting all the transcripts and all of the everything ready for and making sure the access person is working with them and all of those connections, what about that group of kids who was ready to go out in the workforce? And what are, how are we helping them? And so that is one of the benefits I can see of adding the counseling to this, and so I am strongly in favor of that, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
So, Calum High School, so Calum High School has implemented student advisory groups. Has that grown from this, from, well, from this, just in general? My kids are pretty excited about it, and they've already met for the first time, so...
That's actually a collaborative effort amongst multiple departments, especially Teaching and Learning, Department of School Leadership, as well as the Office of Student Support Services. We began having conversations really late last winter about the structure of that program, doing some additional research on how it might look and work within our school division. With Mr. Keever's work in Department of School Leadership, we've been able to hone in on what a, the selected dates so that it would be consistent throughout the school division, and then we had multiple meetings in regards to the topics that will be addressed, the general themes. Of course, we wanted to be flexible with student advisory for a reason. Students will lead what we want to provide to them, but the goal is to have those set dates, definitely goal-setting, using that as some, with some flexibility about topics from career options to college planning, school counselors playing a critical role, getting a chance to work more one-on-one in that small group setting with those students across those selected dates for advisory throughout the year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Is our, are we, to the extent that we have college access counselors, are we actually even better relative to SOQ than what I see up there? I assume that those numbers up there did not include the access counselors.
That is correct. It does not include them.
Okay, so we are actually blessed in that, that high school ratio is actually probably better than, than we see up there. Again, they're part of the team, I'm sure.
They are part of the team. We have a meeting actually planned in the near future, but their role is specific.
No, no, understood.
And so in terms of the mental health needs of our students, as well as some of the other demands, but they do offer a great support to our students and our counselors.
Ms. Rye? Hello. So, with regard to the goal-setting, I wasn't so concerned to see the feedback because I realized that as a division, it's a focus and a work in progress, so I expect to see those numbers improve and with time. And certainly with regard to the other matters at the high school level, I, I believe without a doubt that Lightning's caseload will make such a difference. And you, you alluded to, to it yourself with just the change in the term. And I, I would argue that even the current SOQ ratio, which I understand is probably in line with the national ratio, but I think nationally we have catching up to do in terms of recognizing how school counseling has evolved.
Yes, ma'am.
And what's demanded of these counselors. So, out there, guidance counselors, school counselors, I don't want anybody to, to think that we're inferring from this any shortcomings on their part. I think there, it's an unbelievable, you know, we're, the demand is incredible, and I'm looking forward to further discussion on how we can start to help Lightning up that load.
Thank you.
I was a little disappointed with the results of the survey in the high school part of it, and I'm hoping that by adding some counselors that those numbers will change.
Yes, ma'am. That's our job.
So, hopefully. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, onto the information part of our agenda is the Family Life Education Curriculum. Ms. Cashwell?
Hi, good evening. School Board Chair Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. This evening, I'm here to present information on the proposed curriculum for Family Life Education, and subsequently will seek your approval via action on September 19th to implement the proposed curriculum this school year. As I begin the presentation, I'd like to start by thanking Brenda Fuller, Health and PE Coordinator, Alice Ashley, Health and PE Instructional Specialist, and Nicole DeVries, Administrative Coordinator from the Department of Teaching and Learning, for their diligence and oversight with this curriculum revision project. Furthermore, I'd like to thank and acknowledge any teachers who may be in attendance from our Curriculum Revision Committee this evening. These teachers who served on our Curriculum Revision Committee worked extensively over the past several months to develop a timely and relevant Family Life curriculum for the Virginia Beach students. So, teachers, if you're with us, would you please stand along with Brenda, Alice, and Nicole? Thank you for your work. Thank you. In addition to the Curriculum Committee, I'd like to also take a moment to recognize individuals who served on the Community Involvement Committee, many of whom may have joined us this evening. As a part of the revision process, the division solicited representatives from key stakeholder groups representing organizations such as the Health Department, clergy, the judiciary sector, mental health professionals, administrators, school board members, and more. These community members took time out of their busy schedules to review each proposed lesson as well as all of the accompanying resources and provide critical feedback and suggestions. Their feedback was valuable and informed our revision process. If there are any members of the community group, would you please stand to be recognized? Subsequent to review by the Community Involvement Committee, the division provided a proposed curriculum to all stakeholders through a period of public review and comment. A timeframe of June 1 through June 14 was established for this period of public review, and multiple opportunities were provided during this timeframe for pub, for the public to view and comment on the proposed Family Life Education curriculum, resources, and associated materials. To make all stakeholders aware of these opportunities, on May 25th, an Alert Now message went to all VBCPs families notifying them of the times, dates, and locations. In addition, principals were asked to publicize the opportunity with stakeholders such as parent-teacher associations and school planning councils as appropriate. Further notice of this period of review and comment was provided through the Core on May 26th and through the Beacon in an advertisement on May 28th. Stakeholders who were not able to attend one of the three public feedback sessions were also able to review the curriculum by contacting the Department of Teaching and Learning for an individual appointment. As the Board is aware, the School Board Policy 6-30 calls for the inclusion of Family Life Education in the curriculum, as well as outlines expectations for the program, including the approval by the School Board of all instructional materials used for Family Life instruction. At the state level, the Virginia Department of Education provides Family Life Education Standards of Learning for grades K through 12. As part of the VDOE guidelines, localities are able to choose which grade levels and which standards within those standards of learning to use with students. The Virginia Department of Education recommends a comprehensive review of local issues to determine the appropriate content to address in the program. The Department of Teaching and Learning staff examined the yearly Virginia Beach Health Department report. Topics that emerged as aligned to Family Life Education standards and were appropriate to address with students included: mental health, child abuse, maternal and child health, teen birth rates, and sexually transmitted infections. The division currently provides a comprehensive health program which covers many of the topics also covered in the Virginia Department of Education's Family Life Standards of Learning. In Virginia Beach City Public Schools, sensitive topics are covered in our Family Life Education program rather than through our general health curriculum. Because of the sensitive nature of the topics, and as required by the Virginia Department of Education, the division also provides the choice for parents to opt their child out of some or all the Family Life Education lessons. The Virginia Department of Education also requires that localities providing a program of Family Life Education have a plan for teaching sensitive content in gender-separated classes. Such sensitive content topics include puberty, hygiene, sexual activity, and sexually transmitted infections. The division's current program was originally adopted in 1990. Although some new resources for Family Life Education were presented to and approved to this, by the School Board in 2009, in many lessons, the resources, content, content, and instructional design are outdated. In addition, the Virginia Department of Education updated the Family Life Standards in 2016, which prompted the need for revisions to ensure lesson and concept alignment of our local curriculum to the state's standards. As a first step in the revision process for the proposed Family Life Education curriculum, the Health and PE staff in the Department of Teaching and Learning formed a Curriculum Committee. Teaching and Learning solicited applicants who were current teachers with experience teaching Family Life Education. Once formed, this committee worked to examine the current program and the new Virginia Department of Education standards. The new standards include more depth of information on topics such as identity and even human trafficking. They also examined the local Health Department report, and specifically the areas around mental health, child abuse, maternal and child, child health issues, teen birth rates, and sexually transmitted infections. Based on this work, they determined which of the VDOE standards to include in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools program, and developed lessons, and then determined the resources to support those concepts. It's important to note that the Family Life Education program is currently taught in grades 2, 5, 6, 7, 9, and 10, and the proposal includes a recommendation to continue instruction in those grade levels only. In addition to aligning the Virginia Standards of Learning, the proposed curriculum focuses on depth rather than breadth. The Curriculum Committee focused on developing a continuity of topics throughout the grade levels so that students encounter topics more than once throughout their academic years. At the May 16th Board Workshop, the Board was provided a complete collection of proposed Family Life lessons and resources, as well as a chart detailing the topics that were added to, deleted from, and moved within the curriculum. Later, through a memo, the Board received a full report of the public comments gleaned from the period of review. The documents sent to the Board in conjunction with tonight's presentation reflect any edits, revisions, or changes to lessons, and represent the most current version of the proposed Family Life curriculum. Upon the approval of the Family Life curriculum, the Department of Teaching and Learning will conduct training for all staff who teach Family Life Education. This training will be deployed via webinar and will be followed up by Teaching and Learning Health and PE staff who will meet with teachers during the school year to answer questions and provide support as needed. Teaching and Learning will also revise the communication to parents prior to the start of Family Life instruction in the spring to include an Alert Now message notifying parents of instruction and of the information being sent home regarding the opt-out procedures. Currently, information is sent home, but an Alert Now had not accompanied that information. Teaching and Learning is also researching ways that parents have easier accessibility to the curriculum to review. The current procedure for, for parent review requires parents to schedule an appointment either centrally or at the school level. Finally, Teaching and Learning will work to develop a parent and student extension guide that may be accessed by parents and used at home either as an extension of the lessons in the classroom or as a replacement for parents who choose to opt their child out of lessons. Thank you, and at this time, I welcome any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions from the Board? Mrs. Holtz?
This is going to be rolled out September 19th? Is that what you meant? For everybody, is everybody on the same time schedule?
No, the Board would need to approve the proposed curriculum, and I believe it's up for action on September 19th, and then subsequent to approval by the Board, then we would begin training teachers on the approved curriculum, and it would be implemented this school year in the spring, which is when Family Life is traditionally taught.
I remember it as a spring. And how many weeks does it last?
It depends on the grade level. There are a few lessons by grade level that are taught, again, depending, but we're talking about a week, a few days of instruction, depending on the grade level.
Okay. And could you give me example of what you meant when you said depth rather than breadth? I mean, I know what those words mean, but relative to this, I wasn't, I couldn't picture that.
Yeah, in the past, again, and you bring up a good point, thinking about the amount of time that's allotted to Family Life Education, it's typically only a few days by grade, grade level. And in the past, we tried to cover a lot of topics in just a few days, and we weren't able to cover them deeply or in-depth. So, with this new curriculum, one of the focus the teachers had was to lift out essential topics and cover them again in more depth rather than trying to cover too many in a short period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLeod?
I just want to compliment you all. Oddly enough, Family Life was always one of my favorite things to teach, and so, and I did read cover to cover in the binder, and you, you've answered the questions I had a couple of concerns, and I'm very grateful for it. I think you guys have done a great job and put some good lessons together. Is it, I do have one question, though. It is the requirement of the PE teachers. This is their curriculum to teach.
In grades, in the upper grades 6 through 12. At the elementary level, it's the classroom teacher.
Okay. Do we have, I remember when I was teaching, you know where I'm going with this probably, and when I was teaching, nobody else wanted to teach it, so they're like, you know, let Miss, let Ashley, she'll do it. So, is that a difficulty? Do, that, do you have difficulty finding teachers who are comfortable and want to teach it, especially the elementary level?
No, I think that they're comfortable being able to work with their own students. You know, the only difficulty sometimes comes in the gender-separated sections, so oftentimes, for example, for the 5th grade lesson for the boys, it might be that they tap a staff member who might be a male, who typically doesn't teach 5th grade, who may volunteer to take that on as a role, or oftentimes it'd be taught by a female teacher but in a sex-separated way. And again, we make sure that everyone has the training they need so they feel comfortable to teach the lessons, but...
And do we do the training ourselves? I know I actually went to ODU to have the training, so do we, could they, either way?
No, we do our own, and it has in the past and would continue to be with an approved curriculum, very much in line with the actual lessons the teachers are teaching, so it will reflect, be very closely tied to the curriculum that we're asking them to teach so that they have an overview of the exact lessons and the materials and how we'd like the lessons to go.
Okay. Thank you.
And I remember when I was teaching that when a teacher was absent, a substitute was not allowed to teach Family Life...
was not allowed to teach Family Life. Is that still the case?
That is the case.
It's because they're not as trained?
It has to be taught by a trained individual, and the reason for that is really fidelity of the program and ensuring, again, when we're talking about sensitive topics, that individuals are following the protocols put into place by Virginia Beach City Public Schools, for example. Because we allow students to opt out, the way we handle materials is very secure in nature, so things can't be left sitting around the classroom for a student to stumble upon and so forth, and the way we collect information and send it back to parents and that sort of thing. So, it's a matter not just of the instruction, but of the protocols for handling the materials as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that so that they would know substitutes will not be teaching Family Life for, to their children.
That is correct.
Thank you. Ms. Rye?
Hi, and I just wanted to be sure I heard that nineteen ninety, you said, was the last revision?
That's correct.
So, math, twenty-seven years. I think, you know, we should appreciate the magnitude of what you all took on for, you know, a first look after twenty-seven years, and it's a different world now, and so, thank you.
The committee did a great job.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Next is our standing committee reports, but before I ask for that, I just want to point out to the people in, in the room here and to our audience that earlier this afternoon, we had a short ceremony where we unveiled and placed a portrait of Dr. Sheila Magula as part of our past superintendents over on the wall, if you'll notice over here. It's a beautiful portrait. We wanted to acknowledge that. She was superintendent with us during, for a year between Dr. Jenny and Dr. Merrill, and then for another year after Dr. Merrill left before Dr. Spence joined us. So, she has, was superintendent for at least two years, and she was interim in part of those years as well. So, I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that and that the audience this evening was aware of that, so... Are there any standing committee reports? Okay, seeing none, madam. That concludes the formal part of our meeting. Is that right?
That is correct. We do have a speaker on hearing and non-agenda.
We do have a non-agenda speaker. Yes, thank you. So...